Well, it's 6:01 and we're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna stand and say the pledge of allegiance. All are present except Kim Boltsandlcheck, who will be attending the meeting remotely from the Hampton Inn and Suites Houston-Bush Intercontinental Airport. Welcome, Kim. If we could stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I have the pledge of allegiance as a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second, Brandon and Derek. All in favor, say aye.
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 The agenda is approved. We're gonna move on to number three, which is district recognitions. Am I turning this over to you?
I think so.
Okay.
It's nice. My crew is here.
Yes.
Every year at Eagleview we give a spelling bee where it starts in the classrooms, the students do a written test, the top spellers on the bench do a verbal competition in front of their peers and their parents, and so I have our top spellers with us tonight. We have Kate Grabdahl from second grade. Come on out, Kate. I was asking if they remembered which word was the word, and it was a while ago. In third grade we have Autumn Hecker, she was our first place speller, and then in fourth grade we have Ryan Fritz. So these are the top three spellers at Eagleview this school year. Any questions for them?
Any questions?
I have a whole bunch of them that I don't know about. Which word did you spell? Who messed up?
So Ryan, you're leaving on top now. Did you win last year too?
Uh, no.
No.
Second place.
Second place, and the year before that you won.
Second grade. Hmm, second grade, but in third grade I got tied at third place.
Yep. You fed up there.
Absolutely.
That's something every year up there.
The city carries an answer from this.
So Kate, which word did you spell to win the whole thing? Do you remember?
Not sure.
It's alright.
That was a while ago.
How about you, Autumn?
I don't remember either.
So just a brief show of hands from the board, whoever won a spelling bee. Okay, so there you go. Nice job, you guys.
We're very kind of the county.
And so are we, too. Keep up the good work. Oh. Who else can we have?
I've got a little follow-up from the middle level.
Sure.
Ellen Neese, we had mentioned a couple of weeks or a month ago, that was an Americanism finalist for an essay contest through the Elks. She did, we had a little ceremony last week, and she earned a $300 scholarship for her efforts, so really happy for her. What does the middle level do for a $300 scholarship? Hopefully a best. And then Molly Pearson, Happy Guys internal up the street up in Pine River, had a EcoCamp t-shirt design contest, and she won, she was one of the finalists, and she was a runner-up in that process, but I think it champions a lot of things in our region, taking a look at environmental activism, ecological awareness. So happy for Molly as well, and she's the recipient of the $20 gift certificate.
Very nice. So very happy for her as well. Thank you. Sure.
And then on your agendas tonight, you see we are recognizing those four students who were resource training and solution students of excellence. We had our teacher, teachers of excellence ceremony with NJPA. I attended that, and Mr. Rankin was not able to attend. Ms. Hesch and Mr. O'Neil did attend. But Mr. Rankin couldn't attend because he was with these four students at their recognition banquet, so that's why he wasn't there. They recognized Sidney Holt, Barbara Miller, Levi Palmer, and Laura Squires as our top students of excellence, which has kind of become an annual tradition at Piquot Lakes High Schools to do that. And I'll address the teacher who won here in my report.
Alright, so hats off to those four students. Obviously, I know each and every one of them, and we all, and they have set the bar pretty high for their peers.
Indeed.
Okay, that leads us then to number four, which is reports and information items. Student council is having a banquet as we speak, so they were not represented tonight, so we would have the superintendent report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start my report tonight by publicly in front of our public audience acknowledging the people we've been acknowledging this past week. We had our annual employee recognition celebration, and thank the board members that were there. It was a nice event, and it was well-attended. We honored the following people. The following people received 20-year pins: Richard Anderson, Andrea Besnet, Randy Kuski, Vicky Palmer, Tina Spielman, and Mark Young. In that group we have custodian, a couple of bus drivers, food service, and a couple of teachers, so a little fun mixed group there. In the 30-year pins, Mr. Dave Gunther, Steve Stockson, Terry Thompson, and Carol Torkelson received awards, or pins, and we do not have any 25-year pins to hand out this year. We also acknowledged our retirees, and so retiring this year from our district, custodian Richard Anderson, Julie Despot, our community education director, Dave Gunther, art teacher, Pat Qualley, our media center specialist, Susan Mayling, eighth grade, social studies, and Connie Krasinski, high school and middle school special education. There's probably about a million years of experience in that group. They're phenomenal. We're gonna miss them, and we had a great time honoring them and giving them their bell last Wednesday. Last two awards, we gave, the teachers group gave a teacher of the year award, and this year that award went to Pat Qualley, very earned, well-earned award there. And the 284 group honored an employee of the year, and that employee is Robert Angholmes, head custodian here at his secondary building. He's the glue of this building, keeping it running. So we had a great time honoring those staff, and appreciate them. I know many of our board members were shaking hands and saying thank you, and thank you for doing that. I know our employees really appreciate it greatly. Thank you, lots of thanks, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I, I would like to also thank Kurt. I thought he did an awesome job opening that ceremony with a welcome, the teachers, and I just, just in general, I thought you did a great job organizing that, and really all the, it was probably the most fun event I've attended as being part of the school board in the last seven years. Yeah, I really enjoyed it.
Well, thank you for that. I think, what's more fun than honoring the people that poured their lives, lives and hearts into kids, right?
Well, and two years ago, we went from the recognition breakfast over to breezy, and it started, we started out on the right foot with that, and it was well-appreciated, so I'm glad to see that we're noticing that we're building on, you know, that election chair building and getting everybody together.
Yeah, it was a great event. Great celebration, great time here to do that kind of stuff, so, yeah, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
You're welcome. I applaud you, Ryan, and send us some thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. I take it it really is a meaningful event, and Mr. Holmes, the faculty staff, and the chairs, everybody doing anything to do it, I think, with a sense of change.
Thank you, thank you. Well, let's continue with celebrations, because the next thing I'd like, report, on Wednesday, May 4th, a couple of weeks ago, our eighth grade students participated in a day of caring, a day of service event, along with our entire high school group. All the higher, high school students were spread out amongst Crosslake, Piquot Lakes, Breezy, Missoula, Jenkins, doing service projects. And we always hear from our community how much that's appreciated, and how much they love seeing our kids serving, serving in meaningful ways. I happen to be with the eighth grade, one of the eighth grade groups, who was doing heavy cleanup, because that's an adoption highway section that Rotary, Central Lakes, Rotary has, and I'm a member of Rotary, so I was double-dipping, and I was out working with eighth graders, and a random person drove by and thought it was so cool, that she went down to the gas station and found a bunch of cookies, and brought them all back to the kids. I have no idea who she is, so thank you, whoever that was, who brought cookies back for our kids. So that was a great day. I think it's time well-invested, and then we followed that up with Relay for Life event, that was just last week, right?
Last week.
I believe the students earned well over $24,000. That will be donated to the area cancer society. So in these ways, we try as a school district to model for our students, what service the community gives, and I think the kids here are just knocking out the park and do great things. Now onto some more administrative stuff, just a couple reminders on year-end dates. The Eagleview Tractor Fuel Event is next week, on Wednesday, I believe, on the 18th. The senior awards night is also next Wednesday at 6:00 PM. That's here at the auditorium, when our seniors accept scholarships, those that get those, and we honor seniors. The final exam begins for our seniors on the 19th. And then, of course, we got graduation on the 27th at 7:00 PM. That's a Friday night, and I believe we now have heard from all of our board members that are going to be here. If I'm remembering right, Mike and Valerie, Derek and Suda are doing the handing out this year, right, in the rotation? So those are our dates coming up, and I think I forgot to mention the 25th is baccalaureate. That's at 7:00 PM in our auditorium as well.
Yes, sir. That presentation scholarship, what date is that, yeah?
That is, yes, the 8th at 6:00 PM. It starts in the cafeteria with kind of a banquet and some honoring of some students, and then we move it into the auditorium, and then that's a little more formal. Yeah, I think that, it's a beautiful night, I can, and I don't do anything, I just get to watch and be proud of our kids. A lot of them want to see the amount of money some of them bring in that night, it's amazing. Well, very much. Now I'm gonna speak to a few things that are on the agenda later on tonight, so our board members have seen this and reviewed it for our public. Under our consent agenda is an approval to call for bids on several aspects of the parking lot addition project. We want the public and staff to know that they should expect that this project will be underway in July. So this is to call for bids, then we will at our next meeting approve bids, and then we rock and roll with that project. That project encompasses taking down the white old pool building that's currently in maintenance yet, doing a remodel to the community current, sorry, the old community ed building, they'll knock down one part of it, they'll repurpose, do a half of it, and basically install a garage on there, so they can put the forklift and pump truck and some of that stuff. And then, most importantly, all along that run, in front of the road there, in front of Olson, they'll have a park, and so we'll gain hopefully 70 to 90 to 100 parking spots in that stretch. So Mike Redford is doing good work, getting all that ready to go.
For those that may not know, how are we paying for that?
That is the remaining dollars out of our bond referendum. All that was in review and comment when that was originally due, and because we ran under budget and ran it well, we had enough money to add more parking, which we desperately need at certain times of the year, so prudent move.
Mr. Chair, on the call for bids, are we informing local contractors and local resources so they all have a fair, equitable chance to bid on it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. We want to get local, we can.
Yeah, and then the house of need, that'll be obviously out of there by any time.
It will be out of there by then.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. We've already worked through that exact question. We knew that was coming. Also, on the consent agenda, I just want to acknowledge that we are approving the hire of a community education director. We're excited to have worked through that process and selected that person. His name is Richard Spitska, comes to us with 10 years of experience in community education, under the Sauk Rapids Rice District. He also has experience in the Buffalo School District and with YMCA, so he's well versed in coordination of programs much like run under the umbrella of Community Ed, and we want to welcome him aboard. Also on consent are all of our annual handbooks, and a whole slew of policy changes that are the result of legislative changes. I mentioned that publicly because the packet tonight is about 700 pages long. I'm so glad they went deep for us on our packets. It's about a 700-page packet, but a lot of those things are even done in one fell swoop. Legislative changes to policy, the board does not have authority over it, it's simply changing things to line it up with new law. It takes a while for our policy support, help with NSBA to catch up to changes, so most of these law changes occurred last summer, and now we're catching up with our policies to really look to pay. Finally, in regards to the consent agenda, on the consent agenda are also some call for bids for milk, bread, I'm trying to think of what else is on there, there's another one on there.
Propane.
What's that?
Propane.
Thank you, propane. And I wanted to mention to our public that on our website now, on the business services page, is a schedule of regular RFPs. That's been a question board members have asked me numerous times, when are we going out for bid for this, when are we going out for RFP for that? And so what Ms. Max has done for us is put together a, basically a 10-year schedule of when we will go out for RFPs on audits, on milk and bread, which is annual, and some of our other services, property liability insurance, so that people know that we have a plan, and we will execute our RFP process according to plan. We do always have the right to say we want to go out for bid now on something. We can do that if we feel the need, because we're struggling with a vendor or a situation arises, but at least this way, there's a rhythm, it makes sense, people on our public site can see when they can expect to be able to submit an audit. On a new business on our agenda tonight, one item of, I think, worthy of some discussion is reaching out to teachers on call as a vendor for filling our substitute teaching in paraprofessional positions. We can talk about that at that point, but I wanted to table it up in my report to say that the board has had a chance to have good discussion around this at a work session, ask me lots of questions, and I want to reassure folks that this is a partnership with a pioneer of the Baptist district, and if we or they say no, then we won't do it at all, because it's really the bang for buck we get in this investment is by working collaboratively with our neighboring districts and building that. Last but not least, I want to take, set up the next report that will be coming up. The next item on the agenda is to hear a report from our business manager Jenny Max about our progress in developing the budget for next year, 1617 school year. By law, the school board must adopt a budget by the end of June, and we are scheduled to do that at our regular meeting on June 20th. Between now and then, we will be working out the final details and getting the numbers just as tight as we can, so when we get to the end of Jenny's presentation, then we'll have some time to ask questions of Jenny about a process or details. The board will discuss the budget again at the next work session beginning of June to make sure that we've answered all of your questions. So with that, that's the end of my report, Mr. Chair, unless there are questions.
Are there any questions?
We're gonna have a discussion period on teachers on call, after we get to the agenda.
Yeah, that's a good, that's an action item. Anything else? Alright, thank you, Superintendent Redmond. So with that, we move on to 4C, which is the fiscal year 17 budget report by our business manager Jenny Max, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the school board. Well, this is the beginning of the slide, talking about the 1617 budget, and how it's developing, and just sort of information, most of which you know, but a couple of examples that they have an understanding of the process. Just as a visual, our school effort on the fiscal year, July 1st through 30th, and we spent a chunk of time between January and June developing our budget, different times of the year, depending on first book act, enrollment, revenue projections, limited to expenditures, and spend various work sessions at times with our principals and our administrative staff on discussing, you know, anything that may need to change from current year to the next year, and really, our college rules kind of mine, so we do that through the months that we have been going through that tier, and then amazed really why we're tightening our current year budget, and seeing where those numbers are gonna land, and how that relates to next year, developing the budget. And as Superintendent Redmond mentioned, we are required to approve the budget by June every year, and so we will be bringing forward another draft of the budget proposal at our next work session, and then we'll put that in June. Wanted to share a couple of charts on last year's fiscal 2015, our revenues and expenditures. Just you can see sort of the bigger buckets of areas, whether we're bringing in money and then how we extend those funds. On the bottom right, you can see from a revenue standpoint, that 86% of the money that moves into the district comes from states in terms of various state aid formulas, and different influence in that regard. And the second one is category of funds that we receive comes through our levy in the form of local property taxes, and so that's 10% of our budget from this past year. Typically, it's very consistent from year to year in terms of how much funds are brought in. And on the top left side, you can see from an expenditure standpoint, there are a lot more categories on the expenditure side, with all of our people and our buildings and our capital needs. But the really important thing to see in terms of the chart is that 80, about 80% of our expenditures are spent on our instruction and people support. So being a service-based organization, we spend our dollars with the purpose to instruct our children, and so those are the, that's where the dollars go, and so on the $15 million budget, we can chunk that in our, in our culture. Some of the considerations that we think about when developing a budget, one of the biggest things that we start off with is enrollments, and we use an enrollment projection model to take into account kind of birth rate data, historical trends, population changes, and then things that happen within the district itself, trends on class sizes, and how these move throughout kindergarten and 12th grade. And we talk about some of that, and starting to talk to the other principals, and I'm excited with that, and how that relates to the model. We also look at revenues and expenditures. We use another forecasting model for that, to break in state aid changes, formula shifts from revenues, and then expenditures, looking at assumptions for salary costs, health insurance changes, any of those things that might come into play, maybe our RFPs for different services, all kinds of changes what we expect for those. So we look at some of that. We also include future long-term planning, some of the new revenues we'll be receiving for next year's budget, really, really looks at that in more depth, and developing really purposeful 10-year capital plan, and how that plays into future budgeting needs, and then how do all of these things align to our strategic planning? Where are we going as a district, and what are we trying to, what are we trying to do and change for our students in education? So we look at all of those things together when we go to budget every year. Some of the knowns and unknowns, really the two big things that will change from year to year, is what's happening with the legislature, and are they in the middle of developing their own budget, and how does that play into the district? This year, it's been easier than others, because we know that the formula increase for our state aid is going to be 2% for next year, so we can build that in really easily. But next year, we won't, we won't know what happens, even at this point in the year, I would expect there will be a lot more going on, and so we'll have to do our best, yes, and create multiple versions of a budget to see kind of what that, what that picture would like. And then contract negotiations. This year, we had both of our two largest contracts settled, and so we know what that's, those numbers are to build into the budget. But next year, we probably won't at this time, so how do those two big, two big components play into the budget? I'll spend a couple minutes talking about this slide and walking through the steps. What this shows is a three-year comparative of our general fund, revenues and expenditures. If you take a step back and think about two years ago, we were talking about the 1416 budgets, and as board members remember, that we were discussing the $960,000 deficit, and what we're going to do about that, and it was a purposeful spend down to achieve some strategic plan initiatives, and also spend down some of our balance we had, but as a board, you knew that that wasn't going to be sustainable for the long term. So that was in June of 2014, and in December of 2014, the school board approved a referendum for the first time at $300 per student, and what that did was that generated $445,000 in records. And because our lead timeline is a little bit off from our budget cycle in our fiscal year, what those dollars generated did was, we were able to apply that to the 1516 budget for the next year, and so you can see the automatic offset with those dollars, and that one year ago, we were looking at a deficit of $536,000. So it was better than the year before, but we still had discussions about how do we sustain that long term. Just this past summer, the school board then approved local optional revenue as an additional levy, and that was at $325 per student, and now we're at $625 per student. To generate that $593,000 that we needed, basically then close that gap of that $536,000 from that, from that larger budget. So we generated just over $1 million of revenue over those last two years, and thanks to the board for really having those discussions, because I know there was a lot of discussions we talked about for a while, and how is that, we're gonna make that work. Then developing the 1617 budget, as we're going through the process, oh, and I should say, for those of us who live in the district, you wouldn't notice, then the past couple of years, we've seen a property tax increase, that's resulted in the two, of the two levy additions that the board had authorized, and really to implement our goals, our strategic initiatives, that's, that was how we were able to make that happen. So for 16 and 17 of the school year, we started off when we were in, it was about March time, right, that we were talking about, so we had a $266,000 deficit, which was much better than the prior two years. At this point, as I discussed with the school board a couple of weeks ago, the main work session, we're right at about $30,000 deficit. So as the last few weeks here of the school year, as we're firming up how the school year's gonna end this year, and then how that will factor into next year, we were really good about, about planning right on budget, and then how that translates to 1617. What you have directed myself and the superintendent to do is bring a budget and true balance, so we have every confidence we'll be able to do that, and, you know, moving forward in a really, in a really good solid way. Just a chart visual to kind of look back on, this is the funding trends for state aid and levies back from 2003, so about the last dozen years, and as you can see and as you know, the funding levels have remained relatively flat, and for most of those years, those funding levels were lower than they were in 2020. So it's been a struggle for all districts around the state, that how do we raise the revenues to keep them in the program score that we need to, so that's one of the question that, that I know comes up every year, building budgets, and then talking with our state officials, how can, how can the state, do we start with that? Those are all the sites I have.
Are there any questions for Jenny?
Mr. Chair, if you're gonna have any, I'll start. We are going to have a board work session, we have final discussion before we approve the final budget, correct? Okay, so I guess at this point, I'd just like to say that I think our ability to come into what appears to be a balanced budget is directly a function of the sources and support that we receive from our finance department, so excellent work, Jenny, and administration. Again, this is a plan we're looking for, see, that was, that was some pretty serious planning that went on a year and a half, looking to the future, the uncertainty of funding, and everything that goes on with our district, and so I would like to make that better. Back.
Thank you, Kurt. Anyone else? We have been over this material two or three times as a board, and I do appreciate the effort that you put into this, Jenny. This year is, you know, we're, we're at a high watermark, our negotiations are settled, we have approved a referendum, this board has, twice, but there's still a little room left in that buffer, if you will, but I think the thing moving forward is 2017, 18, we will be back in negotiations, we'll probably be looking at state funding that may or may not keep up with our current increase in expenditures, and, you know, then we'll, we'll have to put our thinking caps back on and see how we're gonna come up with what we need. We do not want to do anything with our programs in this district. We like things how they are, we're at a good staffing level, and, you know, we'd like to keep it that way, but it's always a struggle, and I do appreciate the staff, the administration, the superintendent, and our business managers' efforts, and all of us, keeping this ship running year after year, so. We know what we've got going here this year, and we're very grateful, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
With that, is there anything else? I'm sorry. Okay. We'll go on to the consent agenda. I didn't hear anything from you, Kim, I'm sorry, do we have the volume?
I can't. I have a little fear.
I can see her. Five is...
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. We're gonna go on to the consent agenda, and although board action is required...
Yeah, she's muting it on her end, so she doesn't...
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. We're going to go on to the consent agenda, and although board action is required, all items listed are continuing, or considered to be routine, will be acted on with one motion, with no separate discussion. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So, sorry.
Brandon, and second by Derek. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. We have three action items tonight, the first one would be action item A, Teachers on Call. I'm looking for a motion to authorize the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement with Teachers on Call for the period July one, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Hello.
So Val, and then Kim is the second.
Okay.
We vote all in favor, say aye, no, discussion, sorry, after, what, sixteen months now? I should have it. Is there any discussion?
I have to...
Oh, do we actually have to vote on the motion?
No, no, we have...
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. So, is there any discussion?
I'm interested.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Kurt.
Thank you.
Save me.
In reading this contract, Mr. Lynnholm, two things pop out at me. The first one is a simple mechanism, they're going for net fifteen, I presume, we're net fifteen with other vendors, does this cause a problem being at fifteen with these guys?
No.
Okay, so that's, now, how about reconciliation periods, so are we going to get enough data back within that two-week period in order to reconcile the accounts and the buildings within that two-week period? In other words, we, we, we contract services, they invoice, we have whatever that timeframe is from the receipt of invoice, the payment to reconcile any discrepancies that may exist, is that enough sufficient time?
Yes.
Okay, so that's one idea.
They have a weekly, weekly process, the head secretary of each building reconciling what their building is for, which lumps up into probably a monthly billing, but...
Yeah.
It's weekly because they pay their subs weekly?
Okay. Oh, yeah, I figured that.
You know, but, but I, on the reconciliation, I just was wondering if we delayed it, we delayed it for the first two weeks, that way we're catching up and having enough time to do the reconciliation of all these matters, because this is sort of sophisticated, in my opinion, with all the overhead and everything that they're paying, rather than buying a lift of paper plates.
Right, right.
So, yeah, yeah, so that's first thing. Second thing is that, well, that's actually three. Second thing is the, the fee, that five thousand-dollar placement fee, I'm not following the math on that, it is something about four hundred and eighty hours. If we hire a teacher after, and any teachers that are on staff with us are exempt from this, once they, once the agreement takes place, then if we put, we hire one of their personnel, and if we don't employ them for a period of time, four hundred and eighty hours, then they get, they can call for a placement fee. So that one, I have a little question on it, is that, okay, I understand that, but what if we get four fifty-five, and all of a sudden we're in a, a long problem?
I believe what you're speaking to here is the clause where Teachers on Call sets up a protection for them for, against districts basically taking their staff, so, so they set that up to say, if you're going to do that, we're going to talk about this openly and have a plan for it, and so they don't just become the farm school for teachers to, for districts to hire teachers. That's what they're putting a clause in here to protect them on. Now, what they allow us to do is, like in a long-term sub situation, they're willing to say, well, either we hire the long-term sub, or we have them hire the long-term sub and we contract, they're willing to go both ways, as long as we have the plan on the front end. What they get angry about is if we steal someone without having communication with them, and then they're going to start fining us this five thousand-dollar fee.
And I think, I just want to know about the equitable, is that, this is equitable for both parties? I mean, necessarily Peter does, in that context, or do you feel, you must feel it's equitable, since we're ready to approve this, so.
Look, you know, the four hundred and eighty hours, in other words, if we do hire somebody, we at least can get four hundred and eighty hours on them.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's equitable.
I did the math, it's ten dollars and forty-seven cents, so.
Right, 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 okay.
Third thing is the cross lateralization of these documents, you referenced the fact that we want to be in this deal with Pine River.
Correct.
And I didn't find anything in the document that references across, a cross pollination of these, of the documents. Do we want to put a clause in here that says, look, we'll approve this pending approval of Pine River, or are you, you're comfortable we're going to get to it?
Um, that is why the motion is authorized, we need to approve the contract, because then next Monday, if they don't approve it, then I just won't sign it.
Oh, so you got one, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we ordered the motion the way it is, so.
Okay.
And for clarification for everyone, so people understand that, really the merit here, the biggest issue that we're having, and why we're reaching out to a vendor for subs, is we don't have enough, we have a significant shortage, and so the merit of, one of the merits of going to a vendor like Teachers on Call is they work, that's a big core part of their process, they work to recruit subs and get people to sign up to do that, and then the subs, from their end, have the ability to sub in whatever districts Teachers on Call contracts, but, so if four, five districts in a region, and Southeast Minnesota is a good example of this, get together and Teachers on Call employs all the subs, the sub logs in in the morning and goes, wow, there's a job in four different districts, which one do I want to go to today, because I work in all four, and they can see it all right there in one portal, and the portal they'll use is the same one our subs could use, Hayside, so they're not going to feel any difference, per se, in their normal routines. So the real merit here is in having a couple of districts go together on it. So the motion is raised to say, you're giving me the authority to sign the contract, and you know for me, I'm not going to sign it until the board...
My role?
No, that's right, it's, it's good for the public to know that, that I'm not going to sign it if the Pine River Board does not approve going along, and that's not, and that's not a, I'm not putting them up against the law, they can say no, that's not a big deal, I just, it's not worth the money if we don't have at least two or three districts.
To material.
Yeah, yeah, so if teachers can go with them, that's great, and we'll hopefully get some others to join us, because the, the shortage of subs is very, very real, as I shared with the board, and a work session two weeks ago for our audience, we had September to April, we had ninety incidences of having a parent position not filled, and over forty teacher positions not filled, which means our staff are scrambling to try to cover, and frankly, we're not getting services to students that they, they deserve, so we need to do something, and this is one way to get at it. I think it actually addresses a couple other things, such as a reduction of workload in our payroll office, and, and protection of liability on both ACA compliance and just regular employment law, because they do a better job than we do currently of screening applicants, vetting, and training, and they will carry all that liability. So, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate your questions, and I...
You need to get the one you're opt-out too, Val, because you were thinking about that so long.
Yeah, we were able to get that in there, so that we can opt out at any of your one that we're not happy with services, and then the contracts they do are two-year contracts, so we'll be re-upping this in two years, anyway, sorry.
No, we're going to just finish up with Kurt here first. Thank you, Kurt. So then Derek, please.
I just had a question, you talked about last year, the incidences when we had this, our teachers weren't able to come in, what is this company promising us as far as statistically bringing that number down to, so if we had ninety incidences of this, teachers are they going to bring it to ten, or where are you at?
Um, that's a good question, what, and it's a hard one to answer, because the numbers are hard to compile. They, they talk about, the number they use is fill rate, and so in a large district agreement, you're using a data collection system, St. Paul's an example, St. Paul was running in the seventy percent fill rate, seventy-five percent fill rate, they'd have, over three years brought them up to a ninety-eight percent fill rate. So what that means, in my, my head, is, you know, well, what is our, I can't tell you what our fill rate is, because we don't have enough data compiled to give you that. So they haven't made a promise, but what they have said is, is that fill rate is what they're all about, that's the mission of their organization, so they're going to get after it. I think the question that maybe for me to wrestle with, and I own that, is what is our expectation for that promise, and a year from now, if they're not there, then do we cut bait? That's why we got the one-year bailout clause in the, in the agreement, so we can. I don't know the answer, they didn't make a promise, and they didn't force them to say it, but they did say is, sometimes it takes a couple of years, particularly if you only have two districts to go, if you have three to go, then you get more synergy and you go faster, so I think a year from now, we'll be having the same discussion, and we'll be asking the question, is it, is it better, or how much better, and is that good enough, or are we going to, you know, again?
So, kind of tagging on to that, and I know this question was probably asked two weeks ago, but if a teacher signs up with Teacher on Call, works in a potential of two districts, can they then work in another district for our south or east, i.e. Pillager, Brainerd, or Crosby? If they sign up with these guys, can they work outside of this contractual situation?
They can.
Okay.
We can't go get subs on power, so we're going to, we'd have to do all our subs to Teachers on Call, but the sub themselves, they could go work in another district. Does that make sense?
Yep, no, that's what, that's what I asked, yep.
Yep.
Val?
Okay, so, couple of questions, I thought at our work session, and correctly went wrong, if by a certain time in the morning, we didn't have that position filled, we could start filling it from our resources, is that correct?
We start, we start calling.
But we have to use their...
Right, we'll still have to use their pool.
Their pool, okay, I didn't understand that at our work session. Is there any thought if Lunsbrader fills their superintendent position, if this might be a conversation to have with the Brainerd School District in joining something like this?
Absolutely, and we get a, actually, broach that conversation with Brainerd, and because of the leadership's transition, they were ready to go that direction, but we'll revisit it a few days.
Okay, I just know that, like you're saying, if we have more districts using the same service, we'll have a greater fill rate and a better, better satisfaction rate overall. I'm not saying we should be dependent on Brainerd or anything like that, I think it's great that Pine River is considering it, and I know Pillager was one of the districts that was maybe talking about it, and I think, you know, Crosby looked at it as well, that certainly that's, those are the districts that our subs come from, so, or work in, typically all of those districts.
You're absolutely spot on, Brainerd would be a wonderful addition to that pool, and Pillager is in, so Pillager, Pine River, and Pequot will go this year, if the board approves this, and I'd love to get Brainerd, because we share, most of our sharing of subs is currently with Pine River, but we do share some with Brainerd. Another conversation that I know everyone's having, is how much do we pay subs, and how do we incentivize people to be a sub in our district? We maintain all the control on that, even with Teachers on Call, so we can still say we're paying X amount, we can still say we're going to set up a, what's the word, ominous, but a...
An incentive.
Yeah, an incentive for subbing X number of hours in our district, we still have the ability to set all that up locally, and as a board, we, I know that was mentioned two weeks ago, Kurt, while we mentioned, what about the difference in pay? So that's something we'll be talking about here as we finalize that budget for next year, weaving in the cost of Teachers on Call, and possibly coming in and saying, you know, we know right now Pine River pays ten dollars a day more for a teacher sub, you know, we pay a little bit more for a parent sub, do we want to even that out? Do they want to even that out? You know, those discussions are worthy of having, I know Brainerd has had some of those discussions, so, because they're having very similar shortages.
Thank you.
So then, it, it won't hurt us in our pool, they can sign up with T O C, and work outside the T O C agreement in the districts in the area that are not part of the group.
That is true.
And then you did say Pillager is actually on board with this, no?
They're board as always, I guess.
So we have, if Pine River were to, and again, no pressure, but if they were to, we would have the south and the east, north part of this area.
Correct, yep.
And this is all stemming from the fact that we're short every day, that's generalization, I know it, and we're looking at some way to fix this.
That's correct, yep, yep, and I want to point out publicly that I really, I really would not bring this forward if I felt this was a bad deal for subs, because we, our subs are awesome, and we, the ones that are our regulars, we love you, and we want you to stay with us, and this, this provides them an opportunity to earn benefits if they have worked that many hours, this provides them an opportunity to get some incentive pay if they work so many hours, and so it does several things for the south that I think is a good deal, and we're going to have to work pretty hard with Jenny and with Lori Elfrin to reach out to them and make sure they understand that this is a treated employee, because it's actually better for people, and we want more subs, so.
Well, not to put you on the spot, but here I go, what, what does that look like? What does the reach out look like?
Sure, I was ready for that question. We're priming the pump this week, so that next Monday, if the Pine River Board does say yes, then the next couple of days after that, I will go ahead and sign a contract with Teachers on Call, we already have the templates for the letters that we mail out to our subs, and we'll be able to fill in the blanks with the dates for a couple of informational meetings, we'll be able to walk them through the process of how they get online and sign up with Teachers on Call. One of the benefits for a sub who likes to sub in say three districts, is that instead of having to pay your three background checks and your three W four forms, and you've got this one-stop shop that employs you and subbing in three, four different districts, so we'll be able to walk them through that, Pine River will be doing the same thing, as will Pillager, so they'll come in and we'll set up these dates and hold hands to get everyone signed up as best we can, and our goal will be to do that right away, because there's a window of opportunity here, once we hit mid-June, people are checked out, so we're going to want to go real fast at the end of May, in June, making sure that they don't recall and all that, so that's the rollout plan.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on this one? I mean, we're looking for a solution to a problem, and that's what we're, what we're trying to effect here, and so I'm willing to take a little of this on faith, and knowing how well our administration works, I have every confidence this, this is going to succeed. So, with that, I am looking then for a, I am looking for, we've had the motion in a second, I'm just looking for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I am very sorry, and all opposed, no one. Something else, just wait. Six B, the second reading policy, seven oh six point five memorials and memorial activities for deceased students and or staff. This policy is presented for a second reading, two additional readings are required at subsequent meetings, therefore no action is necessary at this time. That leads us to six C, which is donations. There are a lot. There are a lot, and I appreciate each and every one of them, and I think I specifically, amongst others, asked if these be read out loud, so I do appreciate everyone that went above and beyond on this list. I'll read the item, the donor, and the designated use. Eleven thousand, eleven hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-six cents by Gregory Cook for the High School P B I S program, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-one cents by Pauline Gustafson for the athletics fund, twenty thousand dollars, First National Bank for the general fund. This is a grant, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents, resource training and solutions to be used for E C F E parenting education. This is another grant, thirty-one hundred and forty dollars by the Five Wings Arts Council for Glapa, a year with frog and toad production, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, Pequot Lakes P T A for the eighth grade celebration. This item is curriculum, Heather and Micah Topness, Eagleview Special Education Department. The next dozen are for the robotics program, I'm imagining that this is things that these, these young adults have done out and procured, or is this above and beyond even their fundraising? Nonetheless, the next twelve are for the robotics program, fifty dollars, Backus Lions Club, seven hundred and fifty dollars, Patriot Athletics Club, Inc., four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents by miscellaneous contributors, five thousand dollars by the Pelican Lynx Conservation Club, one hundred dollars, Epic Auto, one hundred dollars, Dodie Brothers, eleven hundred dollars, Pequot Lakes and Breezy Point Line, one hundred dollars, Pequot Lakes Super Value, one hundred and fifty dollars, Mid-Minnesota Federal Credit Union, one hundred dollars, Air Hydraulics Systems, two hundred dollars, Nisswa Marine, two hundred dollars, Landis and Gear, all for the robotics program.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can we find out how, how do we do in the championship of the universe down there in Kansas City, or down there, or not?
Do we know?
You said sweet, I think.
Yeah, they were not...
Yeah, they were not at St. Louis. We got, I believe they placed middle of the pack.
Thirteen, or?
Middle of the pack within the rookie division.
Yeah, that was world championships, alright.
Yep, Lumley and Novak were very pleased with the boys. They did a phenomenal job down there. Learned a lot, road trip together as a group, which was really exciting, too. Learned a lot of things beyond just robotics, I think. It was a great time.
Well, it's a great, you know, it's a great advertisement for STEM programs around here, and, you know, it's nice to get up on the right foot there, and they certainly did. So the rest of, and there's about a dozen here, are all going to the baseball program, starting out with $125 from LaWicca Chiropractic. $100 from Klaus Stamping. $275 for Susan Lehman. $275 from Lucky's Tavern. $275 from Watt Automotive. $275 from Billy's. $275 from Pequot Lakes Super Value. $275 from Ganley's. $275 from First National Bank. $275 from Pequot Lakes Dairy Queen. $275 from Oasis Oil. $275 from Stone Mark Land Surveying, Inc. $275 from Lakes Dental Care PLC. And last but not least, $275 from ProBuild. Again, the last 12 are all going to the baseball program for designated use. Just want to thank everybody, a lot of businesses, a lot of people here that be home every month, go above and beyond for the kids in this district, so thank you. Okay, so last but not least, I've said that a couple times, announcements and meeting dates, so... Oh, go ahead, second.
I think I just motioned donations is presented by the right hold. Second.
Well, thank you, Brandon, and thank you, Derek. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Not aye, the motion carries. Announcements and meeting dates. Okay, Mr. Lindholm can back up and hit a couple more if he wants, but Friday, May 27, 7:00 PM, is graduation. This is the highlight of our year. Board members be in the central office at 6:30?
Correct.
Monday, June 6, 6:00 PM, board work session, and then Monday, June 20, 6:00 PM, regular board meeting. We will not have a work session in July, as is noted on the schedule for obvious reasons. It falls over the fourth. Except for asking for a motion to adjourn, that's all I have.
All board members at the conference, with the exception of those who handle the...
For graduation?
Yeah.
And we'll all be in front, yeah.
And then the board will step up. This is real clarity.
Yep. Kim, are you going to be there to put the vote, the vote keeps on us?
Are you going to be at graduation, Kim?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Here's a motion, here's a motion I might get right. All in favor, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
And a second by Valerie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.